Hi there.
I think that's where everything went wrong.
Oh, okay.
Never miss.
Never miss.
I don't know. They'll give you a gold watch when you leave.
Yeah, right. It'd be a chicken ass.
One of the plastic ones with a gold chain. Right to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's called order. All present. Item four. Democrat does that.
I didn't look at him.
Motion to approve item number four.
Here's a correction. Motion by one, second by one. Table, table motion.
Do they need to be corrected? Why weren't they corrected before we got here? That's what we do.
You shouldn't have been. You made the motion, Mike made the second.
We're going to amend the minutes? Do you need corrections?
Yes. The motion to ratify or approve the seminar request, it was made by me and seconded by you.
Approve to amend, correct, whatever we have to do to correct them, approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five.
Motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item five on the agenda, ratify and approve the cash disbursement of electronic cancer. Questions or comments?
What?
You gotta speak up, I can't hear you. You gotta speak up.
What are the federal payroll taxes?
Federal payroll tax is exactly what it means.
I mean, who gets them?
It goes to the federal government. They're federal payroll taxes. What's taken out of your paycheck for federal tax? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item six, ratify and approve following seminar request and payment for seminar request. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like more explanation about the first course cost for Paul Johnson and Robert Thatcher. And it says nuclear shipment truck and type B container demonstration. Do you have any more explanation about that? What does that mean?
I don't have it on those, but I'm sure it deals with nuclear waste and nuclear material that's transported out on highways and dealing with incidents of those natures.
So do we have any of that coming through our county?
Well, of course, we have eighty-one in our county.
Oh. So any kind of nuclear waste? And what's type B, I wonder?
Type B, I'd have to find out. Type B, I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item seven on the agenda, accept with regret the resignation of Carissa Changlin from the sheriff's office. Questions or comments? Yes.
And how long was she with us?
I couldn't tell you, about six years, ten years.
Oh, several years?
Yeah, several years. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item eight on the agenda to ratify the transfer of Celine Herman from the parthenary to the secretary and real estate clerk in the sheriff's office. Questions or comments?
Does that mean she's in the sheriff's office now or in the parthenary's office?
I mean, she's in the sheriff's office.
Okay, so they're moving her. Okay, because I always see her in the parthenary.
Well, that's what it says, that she's taken out. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item nine on the agenda, accept with regret the resignation of Paul Wellman from Children and Youth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item ten on the agenda, accept the resignation of Alex Anderson from the jail. Questions or comments?
Can you explain what that means when it says jail? What's his position at the jail?
C.L.
Corrections officer?
Yes.
Shouldn't you put that in there?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item eleven on the agenda, approve the transfer of Molly Edwards, Suscano from the human resources clerk to the full-time salary position of the human resources administrator coordinator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item twelve on the agenda to ratify the transfer of Gregory Razzar of Berkland from the part-time correctional officer to the full-time corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item thirteen on the agenda to ratify the transfer of Jeanette Smith of Montrose from the correctional officer to the full-time position of kitchen steward correctional officer. Questions or comments? Yes.
What does that mean? Does that mean kitchen steward and correctional officer? Is that two different positions?
It's a position that has both titles to it. It's a correctional officer that works in the kitchen.
And she does correctional officer too?
Well, that's part of the job in the kitchen, as corrections officer in the kitchen.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item fourteen on the agenda, the transfer of Matthew Ashi from Brackney to the maintenance to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve is listed on your agenda.
Number which one?
Fifteen, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item fifteen on the agenda, approve the hiring of Patricia Pickett of Montrose to the open human position assistant head real estate tax clerk. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item sixteen on the agenda, the hiring of Patricia Leach of Montrose to the full-time union position of field appraiser. Questions or comments?
What does a field appraiser do?
That's a person that goes around and checks the homes and works to create the value for the assessment and for the taxes.
May I make another, ask another question?
Yeah.
There were, in the last couple of minutes, there were ten either transfers, resignations, and new hirings. Is this like the time of the year? It's an awful lot in one shot.
No, what happens is, you know, when a couple people either retire or leave, then what happens is it becomes a bidding for employees because they're union positions. So they, and non-union positions, so they can bump around. So a person may move from one department to fill that one, then another person moves from another department to fill that one. So that continues until everybody's moved and then we have an open position that we go to the public for.
And then do you know how many field appraisers do we have at this point?
That will be, there will be three field appraisers.
Is that more than usual or additional? Is it the same?
Yeah, it was an open position. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item seventeen on the agenda, sign the purchase service agree between Suscano County Services, Children, Youth, and Preventive Aftercare for July 1st, 2014 through 2015. Questions or comments?
And how many children are being involved with preventative aftercare?
Currently, right now, there isn't any in there.
No. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number eighteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item eighteen on the agenda, to sign the purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and the Rent of Aftercare for July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, June 16th. Questions or comments?
Where is Harbor Creek? Who are they? Where are they out of?
Harbor Creek.
Are we on nineteen?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, on eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Item nineteen.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item nineteen on the agenda, purchase services agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Harbor Creek Youth Services. Questions or comments? If the question is where they located, and I couldn't tell you exactly where they're located. Harbor Creek has got one youth that's been placed there for 239 days.
And now are they taking children that are delinquents or they're somehow, what's the word for it, their parents can't take care of them?
No, this is, this Harbor Creek is ones that take ones that have severely handicapped children.
Mentally handicapped?
Yes. And it goes through our juvenile probation and children and youth. And it's located in Harbor Creek, PA with a one-six zip, so that's probably over, probably two-thirds across the state, closer to Pittsburgh in here. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twenty on the agenda, purchase service agreements between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Children's Service Center of Wyoming Valley, Wilkes-Barre. Questions or comments?
How many children in that one?
Right now, we have three children for 386 days total.
That means per child goes in for 300 and some days?
Yeah.
And what's their handicap or situation, do you know? What is their classification?
It's based on psychiatric evaluations. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-one is listed on your agenda.
Are we sure those dates?
Yes.
It's two years behind instead of the normal one.
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, to sign the purchase service agree between Suscano County Services, Children and Youth, and PA treatment healing for the terms so stated. Questions or comments?
Same thing on this one. Where is it located? How many children? What's the classification?
The, this one is, is in South Montrose. One of them is, and another one is located in the Scranton area. Right now, we have two in foster care and for 172 days, and one inpatient for two days. And we have four that are 280 days, and that's for a day treatment program.
And is this also, what is it considered, psychiatric also or?
No, this one is juvenile probation and children and youth placement. So kids that have any specific needs. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-two is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twenty-two on the agenda, to sign the purchase services agreement between Suscano County Services, Children and Youth, and PA healing, and this is for the term of July 1, 2014 through 2015. Questions or comments?
Do you have any costs at this point that you put together? How much is it costing the county to take care of all these children per month or per year for all these various programs?
It's less, on this one, it's less than $2,000.
On this one, but you have several programs of some.
Right, they all vary. A minimum of eighty percent of the cost is reimbursed directly from the state. So our cost is minimal.
And then do you have any statistics whether this is, how many children this year as opposed to previous years? Do we have more children?
Well, you're more than welcome to check with the children and youth director.
What's the name of the director?
Michelle Graziano. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-three is listed on your agenda.
You say twenty-three?
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to sign the purchase of service agree between Suscano County Services, Children and Youth, and Concern out of Fleetwood, PA for a term of July 2013 through 2014. Questions or comments?
And how many children in that program?
That one right now has six children that run there 846 days.
Eight hundred and forty-six days?
Yep.
That's per child?
No, total.
Total of all the children? And you have a classification for that one?
These are, it's used by juvenile probation and they're kids with special needs that meet, that don't meet traditional foster home guidelines. All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-four.
Motion to approve item number twenty-four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item twenty-four on the agenda to award the front column repair to the lowest qualified bidder, Jim Dislak from Contracting out of Carbondale, PA. Questions or comments? Yes.
One could assume that the, our engineers interviewed them, saw work that they did.
Yeah, they went through all the documentation with them and made sure they qualified.
Okay.
And there'll be performance bonds on it and everything else.
The start date?
Start date is supposed to be, I think it's within six to eight weeks, and it's supposed to be completed before the end of October.
You have to close out for entrance again?
No. Actually, they're gonna take and create a kind of a shelter so people can get in and out of it without closing it down. All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-five is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twenty-five on the agenda to allocate $750,000 from Act 13 fund to support the waterline project to the Suscano County Correctional Facility in South Montrose, funding support from the state and other entities for the balance of the $1.8 million project. In the event that the project does not come to fruition, the funds will be reallocated to Act 13. Questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like an explanation of what's involved with the water project. Is it piping coming out from Montrose Lake to this property? Or is it a new water well?
No, it's not a new water well. Actually, the water, public water line runs to the Ristec location now. It'll be extending the water line from Ristec all the way down to South Montrose to the old Bendix site.
And how many miles is that? Is that a mile or so or do you have a?
Four and a mile, I couldn't give you exactly.
It's more than a mile, under two, you think?
I have no idea.
So the whole project is costing how much? $1.8 million?
Approximately $1.8.
For about two miles of what, water line?
Well, you say two miles, I don't, I didn't say how many miles it was.
Okay, so let's say it's over a mile. We don't know.
Well, I'm not guessing how many miles it is.
Okay, something that's within two miles or less. It's costing $1.8 million total for this project? Is that the total price?
The price for this project is approximately $1.8 million.
And this is just the water line coming through? And then what else are they doing? Are they just putting a water line? What else are they doing?
Well, at the same time, they're looking to put the natural gas service down through it too.
So why is that not included in here in describing it? Why aren't you saying natural gas?
Because it's going to cost us to put the, the gas line in. Gas company puts that in.
So it's not costing you anything for the gas line?
Yeah.
But just for the water line? So I'm also, and you're using Act 13 money for this?
Right.
And that's allowable according to the definition of Act 13?
Yep, absolutely.
I also want to request a $2 million project for the water line to be extended from South Montrose Correctional Facility to Dimick, where we have about two dozen families that need water since gas drilling has contaminated them. And this is DEP verified, they're under a consent order since 2010, I'm requesting. And that costs $2 million. A few years ago, they estimated to get water all the way from Montrose Lake to Dimick to supply these families with water. So this is going to cost almost $2 million. I'm asking for another $2 million as a citizen to please consider all these families who are suffering since 2008, having to deal with contaminated water, and they have to have replacement water.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner, call.
Yes.
So the plan is when they're putting the pipeline, the water line in, simultaneously to lay the gas?
Right, they're gonna try to work together as long as they get, and have approval to try and run both lines at the same time so we don't have to dig things up twice.
Thank you.
Is that where it comes from, Lake Montrose?
Well, that's where all the water comes from that feeds Montrose is Lake Montrose.
Is that getting a little risky? I mean.
You think the lake will go dry? I don't think the lake will go dry. I think it'll be fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
I had a, a couple of years ago, I told her to have a water emergency.
Never known of a problem with that lake yet.
I'd like, I'd like to know why the project is needed to begin with for the correctional facility.
Because our, we're down to one well at the correctional facility, one well is non-operational, and on a dry summer, we will run out of water. And also, the storage tank at the jail needs to be replaced. All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-six.
Motion to approve item number twenty-six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item twenty-six on the agenda, to approve the 911 telephone access plan and contribution rate for the residents of Suscano County. Questions or comments?
Can you explain in English what does that mean? In simpler English, like, what does that mean, 911?
Well, basically, it sets the rate as, I think it's the same rate as last year, isn't it? $1.50 per month for the 911.
Is it going up or is it just continuing?
It's the same, continuing at the same rate. Of course, that's a program that in the state is pretty much belly up because they're already using next year's funding to pay for this year's costs.
If they run out, does Act 13 kick in here in any place?
Well, we do use Act 13 funding for projects in the 911. Like currently, you know, we know that we have a huge problem with the 911 center as far as being outdated. And we are looking at the possibility of doing something to create a new facility upgrade, which would be, we'd have to use Act 13 funding to leverage a good portion of it and try to get the rest of the funding from the state federal government. But yeah, the problem is, is, and I don't know how they do it, only government can figure out how to do this, they run out of 911 money usually early in the year because there's not enough revenue in the 911 in Harrisburg to pay for all the costs. So then they start borrowing against next year's money to pay for this year's stuff.
Is this county or state?
It's statewide. The 911 funding goes to the state.
Right.
And then we support it, we get the funding back from the state. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay, Alton, you had your hand up first, go ahead.
Well, I would like to ask the commissioner to send a letter to both U.S. senators on this district rule. It passed the House to oppose Army Corps of Engineers, what they've suggested. And three or four years ago, it went to the, ended up in Supreme Court, and they turned it down. But now they're trying to do the same thing. And this affects everybody in the county that owns an acre or more ground. Because if you could have a water puddle on an acre of ground, then they could tell you what to do.
They're already starting to work on passing legislation to prohibit them from enforcing, is that correct?
What they?
They're already working on it, is my understanding.
Yes.
Does the Farm Bureau have language that they have developed that they want us to use because they oftentimes do?
Well, I had a thing last week, and I was coming in to see one of you, commissioner, and I misplaced this thing.
Well, find it. Call somebody and get us one, okay?
I left you what's in the Farm Bureau newsletter today.
I read that. But I also know you guys have language you like to see used.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we say the right thing.
But I talked to Casey's office and the Republican two days ago, and.
What'd he tell you?
Well, they were interested in opposing both of us.
Whose office you talked to?
Senator Casey and the Republican, I can't think of the.
To me.
To me.
Okay, you get us something, we'll do it.
Well, I left that one paper to you.
Okay, we'll look at it. We have something.
Well, you got a copy of it?
Yeah, I got a copy.
There I am. I showed it to you.
Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Yes, I'd like to know also where the funds are coming from that you said you're expecting for the $1.8 million water project for the jail from the state. What department from the state? What kind of a fund? What kind of a grant? What is it?
Well, there's other, there's other entities besides just the state. It's the state through their capital budget as well as their economic development budget. There's also private entities that, that are interested in helping to support the line also.
And what private entities would they be? What kind of?
At this point in time, until I can get to a guarantee, I'm not going to mention their names.
May I make a comment or ask a question?
Sure.
What's the policy on use of the courtroom?
What's the policy on use of the courtroom?
Yes. For events in the evening.
Well, it's not available. I mean, it's a courtroom. You know, there's security issues, and it's a place for the judge, and it's the judge's area.
Okay, there was a time when the league would, legal women voters would have a meet, meet the candidate. That is no longer an option.
Far as I know, it's not.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is.
And the issue is security? Would be added?
It's a courtroom.
Right.
You yourself have been seated in that courtroom for meeting candidates.
Absolutely, and times change.
Is there an official policy statement with respect to that?
No, there's no official policy statement. It's a courtroom, and it's not to be used for anything but the courtroom.
No public use in the evening?
No.
Thank you.
Piggybacking on the previous comment or question, the housing where the development right on, Church Ave. right over here where the Republican Party meets is hood housing. And they've allowed the Republican Party to meet in there and have meet and greets and have their committee meetings. Perhaps the Democrats should look into that since we all pay for hood housing.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I don't know the name of it, but you all know where it is, right opposite, Lee's furniture there.
I wanted to just add also to what Julian mentioned. We also had recently, the past six months, I believe, a meeting in the courtroom, which was the Planning Commission met. If you remember that, we had a whole group meet for that monthly meeting.
We had a whole group meet for that monthly meeting. So that was allowed. So why is it not allowed any longer since just a few months ago?
It's a county agency. And now that the room downstairs is back open up, they won't be using it again.
Okay, then another question would be, any updates on the roads? How is 167 South being repaired according to what you know? Is it almost done or what's been done so far? And any of the other roads, to any updates?
The only updates I can give you at this point is Farm Bureau with a collaborative group of the Farm Bureau and Township Supervisors and the Commissioners, held a meeting at the end of May, invited Pendot legislators and the Governor's Office and Pendot out of Harrisburg to a meeting to discuss all the road issues in Suscano County. Unfortunately, nobody from Pendot showed up at the meeting.
Did they give a reason?
Yeah, they just couldn't get it in their schedule. So at that meeting, we were fortunate to have a couple of the assistants from two of the Legislature's office, and they were gonna work on trying to get something set up. In the meantime, Monday, I had a meeting at the Northern Tier Region Transportation Meeting in Towanda, which encompasses all the Commissioners from the Northern Tier as well as Pendot 3, Pendot 4, Pendot out of Central. I did go to that meeting prepared. I took about 30 pictures of what's going on in Suscano County and displayed them on the, on the board for everybody to see, especially Central Harrisburg as to the horrible road conditions in Suscano County. They were all quite shocked as to the conditions and the quality of work that's getting done from bridges that were a year old falling apart to potholes in front of the state shed that can't even get filled in front of a state shed, to all the new cross pipes getting put in on 706 and 167 that, all the mud and everything's already going into them and filling them full of mud.
Wow.
Pendot Central out of Harrisburg has guaranteed us that we will have a meeting and people from Pendot Central will be at that meeting. And they will have people there that can make decisions and have authority to do things. So that's the next step.
And what legislator, legislative aides were there? Which, from which legislators?
It was Sandy Major's office and Lisa Baker's office.
And do you have any reason why the work is being done so shoddy, such shoddy work in our county that we're having problems within a year?
I can tell you, for every job that gets done, there are specs and designs that you have to follow. So if they're following the specs and designs, and that would tell me that the specs and the designs are flawed, are flawed, and there's a problem with those. If they're not following it, then that would be the question of why the Pendot inspector on the job isn't catching it and making sure it's being done right. I will tell you that the bridges, that there's an issue on. My understanding from the contractors is the concrete specs have been changed three times in the last four years for the bridges.
Which means what, downgraded?
Well, no, no, they just changed the specs to what they apparently believe will be either cheaper or better or both. But the result being is the one on 7A by the American Legion in Halston they did a year ago, the deck is already, chunks of concrete's already coming off the deck.
Wow.
The one in New Milford by Mary Ann's house, they don't even have that one finished yet. And the lane that we drove on over the winter time is already worn to the point that the cobbles are coming out of the concrete. So they're gonna come up and review all this stuff and see what they're gonna do.
Some more good news on that topic. We were at the Forest Lake Township meeting the first Monday, whatever it was, did you know? And Northeast PA, our section, has some of the oldest bridges PA. So we're getting, we're gonna get a little attention. There's one, one of those little bridges in, I guess it's a little bit north of Burge to go towards Lawton, which is gonna be starting on July 2nd. The detour for cars is 17 miles. The detour for trucks is 28 miles. And there's a whole bunch of those little bridges that are gonna get done eventually.
Well, and hopefully they do because the one bridge in Clifford that was supposed to be getting done this year, apparently has already been pulled back off. Just like 92 from Lennox up to Bowtons service area was supposed to get repaid, they've pulled that off because they don't have enough funding for that now because of the cost for 167.
Maybe they should take the money from the water pipe.
That's all.
Well, there's a couple bridges on that section they just withdrew the money to from back to grab the cattle line.
Yep.
They're gonna fix that now.
Right.
Also, I noticed that Pendot is using Stefurski. Are they using that company to help pave the roads and repair the roads?
They, they contract out a lot of the different projects they do. Like they contracted out 167, they contracted out 706.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And is it Stefurski? Because it's, I see that.
Well, that's one of the contractors they're using, but they also use Popple and they also use, of course, Lee words, the mess in the column that they're working on. And the other one is Pennsy, Pennsy Supply is another.
Pennsy? So is there a problem with any of these companies that they're maybe doing like some kind of inferior work or cheaper type of materials?
No, I think, I think what it comes down to is basically the specs for the job, what's being inspected, and they're not being inspected the way they should be.
And how's 167 South look to you at this point?
Well, it looks a lot better than it did six months ago. It's improving. My understanding, the file will be two inches of blacktop over all the base that's been repaired and there'll be stone and chip it on top of that.
And then I was wondering too, there's a large billboard on South Montrose, we're on the Guy Parish property, and it says ripoffs, royalty ripoffs. So there's lawyers who are advertising in our county for the, you know, royalty ripoffs. So do you have any updates on the royalty issues in our county and how things are doing for any of the residents?
I don't have any updates at this time. Nothing's changed.
So then, if anybody's interested, they can just go and look at that billboard in South Montrose and get the numbers of the two attorneys?
I'm sure any attorney will be more glad to take your money to do something.
So, all right, so that's in our county, which was something that hasn't been here before. So I thought that was interesting.
All right, Alton?
I have gotta give Pendot credit for the good job they're doing for Montrose. Supposed to be a lot, and they're doing it the right now. They're doing it right.
The section of 706 from Montrose to Lawton is being done by Pennsy Supply. And the only concerns there, of course, is still the drainage. The drainage on the roads hasn't been fixed and that's gonna be a problem and that needs to be addressed. All right, anything else?
Do you know when you hope to start the water project? Do you have a date?
Not at this time. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Needs to change some things. The engineer will keep that.
I expect.
Hope we didn't fail.